I'm going to call the Committee on Outreach Communications and Appointments to order at 8:04 PM. Thank you to my committee members for entertaining that fairly lengthy and unexpectedly lengthy gap between the interviews and this meeting. We are all learning our lessons for how to do this better next time. So, on the agenda for this meeting, the sole agenda item is to discuss and develop a recommendation to the Town Council regarding an appointment to the Planning Board. And so we just saw the interviews of the three candidates for appointments to the Planning Board. The way I want to try to structure this debate and frame it a little bit is by the selection guidance that you should have in front of you and it's also up on this screen. So, per the OCA process, we adopt selection guidance to help guide us in our selection of a candidate. It's there to help us understand what we're and to remind us what we're looking for in a candidate. This selection guidance was developed a little bit in our meeting on January 6th and then further in our meeting on January 8th and officially adopted on January 8th. The selection guidance has two sections. One is criteria for a healthy multiple-member body. I would probably argue that 1A through C is not necessarily relevant to this appointment. Since these are all new people, there are no reappointments. But Section 1D is relevant and these are the characteristics of effective Planning Board members that were developed by the members of this committee at the meeting on January 8th. The second section is input from the body's chair. We talked about this briefly at our meeting on January 6th and then agreed that it would be put in directly as it was written from that meeting into the selection guidance. And so this is comprised of information from both an email from the Chair of the Planning Board, Christine Gray-Mullin, and also notes from the meeting that I had with her shortly after she sent that email. And so what I'd like to do is for us to use this selection guidance to frame our discussion since it is literally the criteria or literally the aspects that we said we should consider in a candidate. And so I'm going to ask that we talk about the interviews and we talk about the candidates in the context of this document that we've adopted with the goal of trying to recommend to the council a candidate that we best feel meets this selection guidance and given all of that. So, with that, I am going to open the floor to discussion by the committee as to impressions and which candidate you felt like best aligned with the selection guidance adopted by this committee. Comments by this committee? George?
I think the first thing that I want to note is something that the Planning Board Chair pointed out that we're dealing with a body where all current Planning Board members have four years or less of planning board experience. And so that's something that is very much on my mind when I look at the candidates that are in front of us. If this were a body with a larger number of more seasoned individuals, I would perhaps look at this group of candidates in a slightly different way. So, one thing I just want to point out, which I'm sure is obvious to everyone here, is that we're dealing with a body that at the moment does not have a lot of depth in terms of experience. So that's something that very much is on my mind when I look at the candidates that we're being presented with. I agree with the Chair that it's difficult to apply A, B, and C. I don't think they're really applicable, other than again pointing out the fact that this is a body which, as we've said, does not have a lot of experience with planning as a group. D, I think all the three individuals gave us examples of experiences where they felt that they had exhibited some degree of characteristics 1, 2, 3, and 4. 4 perhaps, perhaps a little bit less so. I think one of the candidates clearly, I think, has had more experience with regulatory situations, regulatory function. So that's my initial thought. I'll probably have some more later.
Thank you. Other impressions from the interviews or feelings about how the candidates relate to the selection guidance that we have adopted? This is rarely a committee without opinions, so. Other thoughts? Alyssa?
Thank you. I'm not sure that our, although I'm still pleased with the questions we asked and we've learned some things for future. And I will go right ahead and say right now that it was the candidate's choice to answer a question with a yes/no answer. It was not a requirement that they didn't use their three minutes to provide an actual answer beyond yes or no. And I think that was also of interest that some chose to do that. Is it was perhaps not as easy to tell as I might have hoped, the part about ability to work in a collaborative spirit and openness to compromise. I think there was a varying amount of the understanding of the regulatory function of the body. I think there was a reasonable amount of open-mindedness, but I'm not clear on the, you know, I'm not sure how we get to it differently, but I'm not sure I heard a lot of examples. And I think it was interesting that we worked really hard to make this super transparent, that there was none of this was a gotcha. This was all provided to the candidates ahead of time. They saw the selection criteria. They literally could have written essays, you know, about each one of these things. These were not secrets as to what we were looking for. And many of these things were not touched on in detail from the candidates. And so I think that in some ways makes our job a little harder. I do want to follow up on what George said about the current status of the body at seven members is there is not a huge amount of experience there and they have expressed their frustration with that. And that does make me less interested in bringing in a non, so to speak, as was referenced during the interviews, I believe, a non-professional. I think actually professional expertise in some aspect of the things that the Planning Board is doing would actually be more useful to them right now than some of the other valuable characteristics the other candidates brought forward at a different time might be a really good fit. But I think at this time, I'm preferring the professional experience of one of the candidates.
Darcy or Sarah? Sarah?
So, I'm not sure that I have anything that's wildly different from what George or Alyssa has said. I think that, I do think that I felt a pretty good sense of, I would say 1 and 2. I think Alyssa's right in the openness to compromise. I'm not sure how we get to that differently, although I do think it was fairly illuminating to me. But I think the thing that really, again, comes to me is that we have an inexperienced Planning Board and one of the things that the Chair has said is that they really need someone who knows the ins and the outs and does not have to be brought up to speed and is a professional. So I'm just saying that I agree that I think one of my bigger deciding factors right now is that that is what the Chair is saying that the Board needs in order to be functional, so.
George?
I don't know about anybody else, but I was particularly excited by the candidate, Mr. Marshall, who has experience with creating a living building and one of the really remarkable buildings in our town and very much hands-on intimate experience, which he described in some detail. And I thought, given our concerns of sustainability, the fact that here's someone who's going to bring that obvious commitment to the Planning Board and actually work to make something happen, actually something quite remarkable. I think, I don't know if all of you, but certainly I and others of you had the opportunity to tour that building and it's very impressive. And so we had in front of us this evening someone who was intimately involved in making that happen. And so I personally found that quite exciting. His connection with the university and UTAC, the fact that he also has had experience with off-campus leasing and housing, which is obviously a big issue in our town, I thought that also was quite striking. The others, I think, bring a good spirit and certainly a commitment to the community and a sense of wanting to be involved and have been involved in a number of ways as they described. But I'm very much struck by the very real-world experience that Mr. Marshall brings in the very areas that planning is involved.
Yes, to build off of that, just to add, because I was surprised by the discussion of the living building experience because in the materials that we've been provided for this, that was not originally in there. And so I was unaware of that experience. But at the moment, he referenced first, I think, an interesting climate change with regard to the first question that he answered about why he wants to serve and then his elaboration in talking about his experience building the Hitchcock Center did strike me in the context of two things, one of which being our recently adopted climate action goals that we passed and the fact that one of the things that we're going to need to do as a community and as a town government is very seriously think about how we implement them because they are admittedly bold and that will necessitate some rethinking in how we develop and plan as a community. And the second aspect that I thought was interesting was that the big, one of the big tasks before the Planning Board is going to be the master plan update. And one of the things that we keep hearing probably needs updating is the sustainability aspect of the master plan. And I think certainly Dave Zomack at some point referenced that the master plan really needs to be beefed up when it talks about how we're dealing with climate change, I think both adaptation and mitigation. And so I was also struck by the living buildings thing in the context of both our climate action goals and this focus in updating the master plan to sort of beef up its sustainability requirements, both of which relate to the Planning Board. Other thoughts? Darcy?
I was struck by how I am having a hard time deciding because I felt like all three candidates were attractive and that the two candidates that are laypeople are both college professors and are obviously, you know, if they were chosen, they would be quick learners. You know, they're both very motivated, obviously, really were earnestly competing for the position and clearly bright, able people. So, you know, I originally, when we were asking how we should decide this, you know, I was someone who said I didn't, I didn't really want to decide right after the interviews because I want, the way my brain works is that it helps if I have, if I sleep on it. If I have some time to think about the decision and so I'm not sure because I would rather have more time to decide.
George?
One question or concern I have about Mr. Marshall is his connection to the university and to what degree that might create complications for him on the Planning Board. It would seem that there might be certain things that would come before the Planning Board that he simply could not be involved in. I just don't know. If we had staff here, maybe they could, but I don't know if Alyssa has any thoughts on this and she certainly may not, that's fine. But that's the only concern I had was given his obviously strong connection to the university and to its planning mission. I'm excited by that fact, but I also wonder if it could create some, I mean, there may be a fair number of issues that he simply can't be involved in. Is that, yeah?
Alyssa?
So, obviously, the person asked would be our Counselor Steve Schreiber since he served on the Planning Board for many years with that experience. I would argue that it was, it's not a problem at all for Planning Board. I can see it being a problem for potentially some other committees and potentially for Town Council, which is why we all had to do a whole ton of disclosures associated with that. But in fact, because of the way zoning bylaw works in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the university has almost nothing to do with our zoning. And so they get to do largely whatever they want. And so the advantage, because I was thinking about that again too, right? And so the advantage is that although they don't have to take our master plan into account when working on their master plan, even though years ago when we had the Comprehensive Planning Committee, we did have somebody from the university there who was ostensibly giving information back and forth associated with that. They can act completely independently with their master planning and with their building and need almost nothing from the town. And when they do, then yeah, there would be a recusal, but it's incredibly rare. And has been my experience is that it's incredibly rare. And it's made up for by the fact that in general planning, if they're talking, if we have a connection back and forth while we're redeveloping UTAC, right? Because U3 doesn't exist and the, has it, the steering committee doesn't exist, has it, and he served on that. And while we're waiting to see what the new UTAC might look like, which he may or may not be the right fit for depending on what the town manager and the chancellor are looking for in terms of that connection too. But I see that as an exciting opportunity for him to say, oh, I know that the zoning subcommittee, which he may or may not be part of, is working on something and have they ever, and they want to talk about incubators for the UMass and so why don't I connect you with somebody over at UMass who knows about incubator space? So, it could be really valuable there and I don't see it as something based on just past history that has been an issue, fortunately. Because in many ways, we lament their independence from us, but in some ways it helps in this case.
Sarah?
So, I just want to say that those things also stood out to me. I felt like, at first I was worried about the connection with UMass, but then I'm hearing so much from constituents that they feel like they don't know enough about what, you know, UMass is thinking. And the fact that he was on UTAC, I thought, well, that might actually be a strong connection to actually finding a way to communicate better with UMass about what their planning is and to have it so that their planning is, we could find a way, again, like we had with UTAC, where the town's planning and UMass is planning, they're communicating with each other. I think that that could actually be helpful. And with the sustainability, I felt like, I just want to say again that because this is so big for us, one of the things that I hear from constituents is we're, if we're spending money on things, on making buildings sustainable, we really would like to know what technologies are working. And this is a person who's actually built successful buildings and I feel like would have a recent and working knowledge of technologies that, I'm just using this word again, that work.
Thank you. Other thoughts, comments? George?
Again, I was struck by Mr. Marshall's comment that when he first came to Amerist, his first impressions, I don't know if I have this quite right, but his first impressions were not quite what he thought the town saw itself. So someday, maybe I'll get a deeper insight of that. But I was impressed by the fact that he was willing to suggest that what he, the way he saw Amerist is not necessarily the way the community or what some perhaps sees itself. I think also, I was also struck by his willingness to politely but somewhat question our question. I mean, it wasn't the only one and I thought that was valuable.
We certainly got some feedback.
No, I know, we did. But I thought he made it an excellent point. I think actually both speakers made an excellent point and that's, you know, we're learning and we'll eventually refine this hopefully. But, you know, he made, I thought, a good point about our question. And yet he still answered it and so I was impressed by his willingness to, I don't know, I would say not kowtow, but he was willing to speak frankly.
So I'll take this pause to sort of insert some of my opinions from what I saw. So I think that there were two things that I particularly was looking for this evening. One was what I've heard from current and former members of the Planning Board is that one thing that makes a successful Planning Board member is their ability to work together, to collaborate, to compromise. And I think we saw that from all three individuals. I think they all had really good examples of how they've worked together. Certainly Mr. Marshall in committee work, Mr. Greeney in multiple settings, especially the one that he gave about sort of what could have been a contentious meeting. And also Mr. Hirsch from more of an organizing and activism capacity. I thought that Mr. Greeney gave really good thoughtful answers about working together as a committee and how to collaborate. And I think that's a really important skill for the Planning Board because they do have to navigate some contentious issues. And I did appreciate his emphasis on how to work together and his thoughts behind that. The other thing I was looking for was that professional experience, given what we've heard from the Planning Board Chair, from the Planning Board and the conversation that I had with the Planning Board Chair about the current composition of the Planning Board. And so what we know right now is the Planning Board has two lawyers on it. We know that the Planning Board has an architect on it. We know that the Planning Board has an engineer on it. The Planning Board has a hydrologist on it and the Planning Board has someone who would be considered a layperson, a general person who doesn't necessarily have professional expertise. And so there's a lot of diversity in experience on the Planning Board. What we heard, what I heard from the Planning Board Chair, that none of those people necessarily have is actual planning experience, right? So we have an architect who can design, we have someone who can do hydrology, someone can look at legal stuff. But no one actually was a planner by trade. And so for me, Mr. Marshall's experience as a planner is something that that body really badly needs. And his understanding of planning and development and zoning, I think, is going to be really useful. I would also echo what I said earlier about his commitment to sustainability impressed me and also echo what I think George and Sarah and Alyssa said, that I see his connection to UMass as a strength because one of the things that I've become increasingly concerned with is the siloing between the town and the university. And I think any future prosperity and vibrancy and economic development in this town will necessarily involve better engagement with the university in any way that we can foster that. So I thought they all gave really impressive answers to some questions, but I think to me, of the three candidates, Mr. Marshall, for his professional experience and what he can bring to a body that's lacking in some of that experience, came out on top. Other thoughts? Darcy?
I guess I feel like that the, Mr. Greeney expressed the opinion that I've expressed before about how he felt like he would represent voices of the town that aren't adequately represented currently on the Planning Board. And I am not sure about Jack Hirsch, but I think he may also. I'm not sure about Doug Marshall. I'm gratified that so many of this committee are, you know, praising him for his sustainability cred, which does sound good. But I guess I am concerned that the composition of the Planning Board reflect the opinions of the residents in Amerist about Planning Board-related decisions. So, I think that is something that I would take into consideration because it's important to me and it's important to my constituents.
Alyssa? And Sarah?
So now, as things start getting a little more complicated, we knew it had to happen at some point, I disagree completely. I believe that the Planning Board is not supposed to be representing different viewpoints in the same way that it's been characterized by at least one of the applicants tonight and by Darcy just now. That's what the Town Council is for and the Planning Board is not an elected position. Therefore, it is not representing different constituencies and viewpoints. What it is supposed to be doing is taking the zoning bylaw and applying it with some small amount of judgment and then things that it finds lacking or that the community brings to it or that the Town Council brings to it or that they think up on their own, they bring to the Town Council for a change in zoning and then separately, there's the master planning work. It is, I would argue, it is not the job of the Planning Board to be representative of all viewpoints in town. It is the job of the Planning Board to enforce the zoning bylaw that we have, which was developed through many years of town meeting and is now developed through the Town Council with Planning Board opinion offered on it in both cases. So, it is in no way important to me to say we need to represent some particular viewpoint on Planning Board. I'm looking at the characteristics and skills that people bring and that's why, go back to what I said earlier about, in this particular case, I think the professional aspect of that is important. And it's not, for the other two candidates, it's not what viewpoint they bring, it's their skills in bringing those. And so I would love to find other spots for both of those candidates in terms of the skills that they obviously have to offer. And if they are frustrated by not being appointed to the Planning Board, as I would imagine they would be, that we could find another spot for them to bring what is clearly their dedication to the community. But the Planning Board at this time would not be that place. Now, depending on who doesn't want to get reappointed or who doesn't want to continue to serve on Planning Board or any vacancies that might develop, just as this one developed, then certainly they could ask to be reconsidered for one of those in the future. But in the meantime, I hope we would look for another spot for anybody who comes forward to us like this, particularly people who've put themselves out in public like this, which was really quite wonderful of them to do because no one else has had to do that. And so, ever. And so I'm very impressed that all three were willing to do so because we were a little afraid when we came up with this public process that no one would do it. So at this time, I would recommend that we choose Mr. Marshall.
Sarah?
So Alyssa just said a lot of things that I was going to say. I guess if we're going to talk a little bit about process, I, you know, one of the things that I thought was interesting was that we really debated whether or not we were going to have, you know, individual interviews or a group interview. And I was very impressed with all three people who came in here and I really felt like they immediately bonded. And I think they, to me, it came off that they were comfortable, you know, sitting there together and you, I felt like they were working together and I felt a lot better about our decision to have the group interview. And I don't want to re-say anything that Alyssa just said, so I'll leave it there.
George?
Imagine seven.
Darcy?
I guess I just would like to push back a little bit about the having diverse voices. The Planning Board is in the process of updating the master plan. It's going to be updating our zoning bylaw. The composition of the Planning Board is extremely important as far as how that will turn out. And so I guess I feel like it is important what voices end up on the Planning Board. The, and there is, you know, the possibility of other openings coming up for a layperson depending on what happens with terms expiring coming up. So, obviously. obviously, a layperson could replace another layperson. But I'm hoping that when we advertise for a position like this, that, that community members feel like they do have the ability to obtain a position on the planning board, even though they don't have background in planning. We do have the planning department that provides planning services and ability to do planning. So we could choose a layperson.
Sarah.
So I think that we have had a lot of discussions about whether or not planning board and zoning board of appeals are political positions. I think that I definitely have pushed back on that. And as far as talking about diverse viewpoints, I think one of the things that I have always said is that I, I, I don't believe that I would want someone who had a, like a rigid stance on something where you, you felt like they would stick to that and maybe, you know, not go the other way. I think I really saw, you know, if we're talking about Mr. Greeney, I mean, he's wonderful. And, you know, he definitely has that ability to try to see in the middle and, and to bring new ideas. I think for me, one of the deciding things is that the chair of the planning board is obviously extremely frustrated with not having enough experience on the board to be able to do their work efficiently at this time. And so for me, I have felt that the thing that sort of pushed me over was actually looking for some real solid expertise, as well as someone that you felt wasn't sold on one thing or another, but could be open-minded, which is also what I saw. So for me, the tipping point right now for the needs of the planning board is the professional experience. And that's, has outweighed, for me, any, anything else.
George.
I believe we're trying to use, or at least I'm trying to use, the selection guidance that we created. And I don't see anywhere in selection guidance where it says diversity of viewpoints. And I don't see where it says layperson, whatever that's supposed to mean. Maybe we want to introduce them. That's something the committee might want to consider at some future date. I don't think I'd be too supportive, but I'd certainly be open to arguments. But at the moment, that's not a criterion that we're applying. Is this person a layperson or not? And does this person represent a diverse viewpoint? So I don't even know how to apply those. But perhaps we could come up with some rubric where we could, and then we could put it into our guidance. But at the moment, the guidance we have is right in front of us, and I'm trying to apply it. And a good portion of it has to do with input from the chair. And I have to say that I'm a little astonished by the fact that we're not, or some of us at least, don't seem to care what the chair actually is saying would be good for us to be looking for. I would think that with any committee, we would take very seriously, wouldn't be the only criterion, but we take very seriously what the chair is looking for. And the chair actually has given us a fairly broad sense of, of what would be needed. And I think in this case, it's pretty clear, of the three candidates we have in front of us, that one of them fits that much more closely. And as we said in the first set of guidance, selection guidance, really A, B, and C are, are really pretty much not relevant in this case. If they were, we could talk about it, but they're not. So I don't see layperson here, and I don't see diversity of viewpoints.
Yeah, I, I want to take a moment and shift the conversation a little bit about diversity viewpoints, because this has been a part, something that's been a recurring theme in some of our meetings, starting back when we first started meeting last January and, in February. And I've always been uncomfortable with the use of diverse viewpoints, because when I hear the term diverse viewpoints, I think we're looking for women, we're looking for men, we're looking for people with different racial and ethnic backgrounds, we're looking for people with different socioeconomic status, people who actually bring different perspectives because of their lived experience. And so it always bothers me when we boil down the conversation about diversity and diverse viewpoints to political positions. And so what, what I've expressed has been some discomfort from the beginning, that we didn't have necessarily a very diverse applicant pool. And so to this, the conversation about diverse viewpoints, I think, is skewing away from what I think we actually are talking about when we say we want diversity on committees. And I think that can be a bit problematic. I, I also want to push back, because I think that if you were to ask Mr. Hirsch, Mr. Greeney, or Mr. Marshall which viewpoint they represent, they would perhaps be taken aback by that question. And say, and to say, some of you would represent diverse viewpoints and some wouldn't, I think they'd probably all argue, we don't have political parties, right? They're not, there's something that, that some are Democrats or some are Republicans. They're all, I think, there for independent thought. And so I kind of share what George says about, even if you put diverse viewpoints on here, you can't assess that, because they would all say, we are independent people who are, who bring our own perspectives, our own experiences, our own expertise. But to say, well, you would recommend it, you, but to say, and especially, and I'll be blunt, because it's getting late, I'm tired, to say to three older white men, you would represent diversity on the planning board, but you wouldn't, to me seems honestly absurd. Other comments, thoughts? Darcy?
I can, are we going to vote tonight?
Yes.
Well, before we do that, I'll just put in my final word.
We can talk for as long as we want.
No, no reason to, really. I just know that when I was campaigning for this position on the town council, in District Five, I, the issue of downtown development came up at every door. And there, I was astounded at the number of people, which was virtually everyone, who had some, some issue with recent decisions of the planning board. So, so much so that that became a very large issue in my campaign. It wasn't even an interest of mine before I heard from so many people. And it became an interest because my constituents were so overwhelmingly interested in the issue of downtown development. And problems with the, like I said, the recent decisions of the planning board at that time, it was the Spring Street decision. So it's, in this town, there is a diversity of opinion about downtown development. And it's the, you know, the elephant in the room. And that's, you know, clearly, there is, there are people on the planning board who want, you know, unfettered development, or something along those lines, and other people who want less fettered, or whatever, whatever the opposite of that would be. So, you know, you can't tell me that it isn't important in Amherst to have a, a diversity of voices on the planning board. And so, you know, I, I am, it isn't just diversity by race, sex, gender. Diversity of voices is important. And it's important in other towns where they give so many seats to the Republicans and the Democrats. We don't have them in Amherst. But we do clearly have a division of opinion, and it doesn't make sense for one voice to steamroll and get all the seats so that they can rule. And I know that was an extreme way to say that, but that's the way it feels sometimes. So, and even in the opinion of the chair, she expresses her political opinion in B, that this, she wants someone on the committee who shares the committee's majority opinion. So I disagree pretty strongly.
So Sarah, you had your hand up before?
So I guess if we're all being completely honest, what I'm, Darcy, what I'm hearing you saying is, it's either pro develop, what you see as pro-development or anti-development. And I don't know that there was anything directly that we asked that actually got to that. And I also don't know that it's correct that we tried to solicit that from anyone. That's something that we have talked about ad nauseam. And I think also, it's important to remember that at this time, this is a body that the town council appoints. And it's not an elected position at this time, where I think that someone's age, address, political opinions have any real part in the deciding factor. These are not elected positions at this time. These are citizens who are coming forward to donate their time. And I, I think that we really need to make, draw that line between elected officials and appointed officials.
George.
For the record, I'm just going to read B, though people can also see it on the screen if they're watching at home. Feel positive and committed to strengthening and growing Amherst economic development and building slash housing infrastructure, particularly in the downtown and village areas. That could be pretty much taken right out of the master plan. And to call that a political view, or that somehow the chair is, is tipping her hand, I just find baffling.
Yeah, I will, I will, I would actually agree with that. As I was putting this document together, I read through these, and with an eye for, was there anything that I would see as sort of a, a political opinion? And to be honest, when, you know, we copy and pasted me these, the one that caused me to pause was actually the time commitment. I'm questioning whether they actually are expected to put five to 12 hours a week into the planning board. That seems like a lot. But anyways, that was the one that jumped out to me. B didn't jump out to me as political at all, partly because you're right, it comes, I mean, it's essentially the master plan. This is the guiding document of our community. And so to argue that someone on the planning board should have some commitment to the master plan that was adopted by our community, by, via the planning board, seemed, seemed strange to me. I also wonder what the, you know, typically if something's a political opinion, there's an opposing opinion. And so would we want someone who is not committed to growing Amherst economic development? Because I'm not sure if that, if that's a criteria we'd want to use. So, so I, I don't necessarily see two B as political at all. I think it just basically is saying, we're looking for people who are here to help carry out the vision laid out in our master plan. George?
We are going to be coming to the voters of Amherst within a year, maybe, give or take, and asking them to raise their taxes, because we have capital projects that need to be addressed. How they be addressed, I don't know, but there's no way that any of this can be done, just without some kind of raising in our taxes. And if we are not spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to increase the tax base and strengthen the economic base of this town, I don't see how we can look our constituents in the face. So maybe what you heard when you were out politicking a year ago was all about certain things that happened downtown. Trust me, in a few months or a year, all you're going to hear about is the hundred dollars of increase in people's taxes. And what are you going to say then? I mean, you're going to have to, at some point, we have to be willing to take a stand for what we think is in the best interest of this community for the long term. And B seems to me to be just a clear statement of what is essential to the future of this town. It's not a political statement at all. Now, how it gets applied, I agree, there's areas of disagreement. But economic development and paying attention to that, we spent an entire year on process, basically, understandably, and we've really done nothing in that area whatsoever. So if we don't start paying attention to it and start giving our, the voters of Amherst some sense that it matters to us, they should rightly wonder what, what we're thinking, right? We, I just...
Okay, so I don't want us to veer into a debate over B, I know it's hard to do. So we have three candidates before us. We have the job of making a recommendation to the council. As a reminder, our process says that we can make a recommendation, we can make no recommendation, but we have to give the council something. And so my personal feeling at this point is we have probably maxed out our discussion. But if anyone has any final thing they want to say on the candidates, I'd be open to hear it. Yes, we're looking at the, so we have three candidates before us. So in that case, I would entertain a motion. The motion would be to recommend whatever name, no, let me start over. The motion would be to recommend that the town council appoint, insert name, to the planning board effective immediately. We would, we should also have a conversation, my, I'm sorry, they, they would fulfill the remainder of Pari's term, which off the top of my head, I'd have to look at when, do you know?
One, I have it up. But secondly, it doesn't matter. We don't have to do that. We can do whatever we want. We should just make sure that we stagger it. So we shouldn't, if, if a whole bunch of other people have a committee term expiring at the same time, we shouldn't pick the same time. So what we have in front of us is we have people, we have three people expiring in 2020. So we definitely shouldn't pick, we definitely shouldn't assign them a term that ends in 2020. We have one person whose term ends in 2021, and two people whose term ends in 2022. So we have choices. We could assign this person to a term that ends in 2021, so we'd have two people who entered in 2021. I mean, obviously, somebody else could resign in the meantime, et cetera. But we are under no obligation whatsoever to have it be the completion of a different person's term. When that person's gone, they're gone.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. Can I just ask what the completion of Pari's term would have been? Twenty-one?
Yep.
Okay.
Kind of makes sense, because then they would have been staggered.
Okay. So actually, before I ask a motion, can we, regardless of who we choose, although that could be influenced, could we come to some consensus about what we would want the term to be? It will have to end, to, to be consistent, June of sometime. I would agree with Alyssa that we have three people coming up in 2020, and so it would be unwise to do that. So I think that we would look at either 2021, which would essentially be completing the remainder of Pari's term, or 2022, which would be more in line with giving someone a, a two-year term, as opposed to a one-year term. Are there thoughts on this? George?
My preference would be for a two-year term.
A two-year term? I guess it could technically be a three-year term too, right? Because planning board terms are three years.
If we appoint...
I'm looking, I'm looking at your guidance.
If we appoint them now, they're serving basically all of '20 and half of '21, if they expire in June of '21. It's an 18-month appointment. I'm much happier with that and keeping the rotation going. But then, we can always keep reappointing people to whatever
But then, we can always keep reappointing people to whatever random term lengths we choose, when it comes right down to it. So that whole idea of, you know, two, three-year terms, and then maybe not so much, it doesn't matter how the six years was obtained in a case like that. What matters, you know, because they're just random.
So number of terms doesn't matter so much?
No, number of years is what matters. Because so many people don't fill their whole three-year term, because of all kinds of crazy reasons, largely because we're trying to keep people staggered all the time. Now if it turns out that just, we have massive people moving to Palm Springs, and all the 2020 people leave, then we may have a different conversation about how long some of theirs are, or, as in the case of, say, for example, Mark Parent with the ZBA, where we carried him over for just a year, even though he was beyond the usual amount, because we knew that that would be helpful to the committee, kind of thing. And we may do that, we may end up doing that with some of these people that have terms that expire in 2020, even though they haven't served six years yet. I mean, we just don't know what might happen. People develop other interests and that sort of thing. But it makes more sense to me to go ahead, and given that we haven't heard from the candidates, for example, I can only do it for one year, or something, that we would say 2021, and hope that we keep with our rotation to a degree, just because it's such a shock to the system when you lose a big chunk of people in a given year.
So, it's 18 months, but I'm going to simplify by saying one year or two year. So, 21 or 22? It sounds like George is in favor of appointing to 2022.
I'm not strongly over there.
Alyssa, 2021? Darcy and Sarah?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Two years?
So, 22? Twenty-two?
It's in no way an insult to anybody, we're just trying to keep the rotation going.
I guess my only concern, it's a very small one, is that whoever the individual happens to be, that they understand that, and it's not, right, that it's not meant to be a judgment on their application or their potential, it's just, and I assume the chair could communicate that to them.
I think, I think the argument would be essentially, we're appointing you to fill the remainder of the vacated seat. I think what would need to be made clear, because there is this idea that you serve two terms, that, that clarification that it's about a number of years, not necessarily a number of terms, because if one person's appointed to a three-year term, and one person's, this would be an 18-month term, it wouldn't be fair to treat it from term. So I think as long as we explain that. So 2021?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for entertaining that unexpected thing that I realized I forgot about. So, the motion would be to recommend that the town council appoint, insert name, to the planning board effective immediately for a term expiring June 30th, 2021. Does anyone want to make a motion adding a name to the insert name? Why didn't put a name in there?
So moved, I will pick a name.
Douglas Marshall.
Okay, so there's been, so the motion is to recommend that the town council appoint Douglas Marshall to the planning board effective immediately for a term expiring June 30th, 2021. That's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so Alyssa has made the motion, it's been seconded by Sarah. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so with that, I will call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So that's four zero one. And Darcy, can I have an explanation for the abstention?
No.
What am I supposed to write in the report?
You, you don't have to explain my abstention.
I would prefer to, if you're not voting, I mean, you're present, you're physically present, but you're choosing not to vote. Is there a reason you're choosing not to vote, as opposed to voting for or against?
I actually do not have to explain my abstention.
You, you don't, I'm just asking you to.
Ask the question a different way?
Yes.
Of course you don't. I think part of the reason we do that is so people have complete information. I would assume that if you're not going to explain it for the report, that you also will not be explaining it at town council. Because if you're going to choose to explain it at town council, then you should choose to explain it in the report.
I'm going to do.
You're getting two bites of the apple. It's, it's discourteous to the rest of us who've explained why we feel the way we feel about something, and then you get to take the floor at town council and say, actually, I know it's not in the report, but I have this completely different opinion about things. So we're happy to capture your points inside the report, so that people have the full picture.
So our next meeting is on Monday. I, I want to thank this committee, I know this has been a meeting-intensive month, but my assumption is that our meeting on Monday should be briefer than our past meetings. I want to use as opportunity, and I'm telling you now, because I want you to think about it over the weekend, even though we'll all be busy at MMA, but one of the things I do want to have some conversation of is just to reflect on this new process and how it went. Certainly, we got some feedback from the interviewees. I think I have learned something about how to schedule these meetings. And so, bring with you sort of your ideas, your comments, your thoughts on how this process went, because there's a chance that this committee might be dissolved and handing this process over to a different committee. And so it would be useful to hand them not only the process, but sort of some advice on it, and some things that could be improved. And then the second thing we'll be doing is talking about the town manager appointments that were filed with the town clerk this morning. Sorry, I think that should be a relatively brief meeting. I don't know about 10 minutes, George. So with that, I will adjourn us at 9:00 PM exactly. Thank you.
You said we're just doing...